If you'll stand and join with me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please bow, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time that we can gather here at this city council meeting, and Lord, we just ask that your will be done tonight, that your covering will be on us and decisions will be made for your will, Lord. We just thank you and bless you. In your precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Be seated, please. Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is called to order. Under community announcements, recognitions, I have no recognitions, the announcements, I'm gonna hold them until we get to the particular agenda item that they pertain to, and then you will have your five minutes to speak. On the consent agenda items A through F, counsel, I need a motion and a second for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Number four. Discussion and possible action on resolution number 2014-17 of the Guthrie Public Works Authority, the authority, approving and authorizing a drinking water SRF loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in a total aggregate principal amount of $610,000, approving the issuance of a promissory note in a total aggregate principal amount of $610,000, secured by a pledge of revenues, and authorizing its execution, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement for drinking water SRF loan, designating a local trustee, and approving and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a security agreement, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement, ratifying and confirming a lease as amended whereby the City of Guthrie, Oklahoma, the city leases its water and sanitary sewer systems to the authority, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing payments of fees and expenses, and containing other provisions relating thereto. And what this pertains to is water to Coyle, it is a grant, a forgiven loan, so it will cost the City of Guthrie nothing. So that's a deal on that, correct?
That is correct. It's actually a loan to be forgiven. It's not a grant, but a loan to be forgiven, but yes.
Any discussion on the counsel? I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote. And it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Number five, discussion and possible action to award bid number 2014-07A, water line extension to the town of Coyle to the lowest bidder per section. Cherokee Pride Construction Incorporated is low bidder for section A with a bid of $294,715, and Northern Equipment Company is low bidder of section B with a bid of $184,929, and allow the mayor to execute a contract. Any questions on that, still with the water line as it hooks up to the end of Langston Line? Counsel, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Approved. I second that.
Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Number six, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2014-21, establishing a replacement cost of a damaged meter transmitter, a flat fee for the additional deposit, and amending the utility deposit fee as recommended by the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. They got together and they were, if somebody tears up that satellite transmission thing on top of the meter, we have to pay to have it replaced, so it's what they get, what they're gonna be charged for that, other fees.
Yeah. The deposit will go from 75 to 125, and the replacement for the transmitter is actually 150.
Alright.
And the flat fee is if your water's disconnected for non-payment, there's an additional $25 charged.
A $25 for the, okay. So again, this went through the Citizens Rate and Fee Committee, and they discussed all of this, and any questions on counsel? Discussion?
Would this be applied to their water bill, or?
For the damage?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so they could just pay it out over a certain time, or they had to pay it all at once?
They will have to pay it all at once.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
Alright.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote. And it's unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Number seven. Discussion and possible action on resolution number 2014-20, revising utility billing and collections policy as recommended by the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. Can you give me any?
The policy change is, we have been allowing letter of credit, and so we're doing away with that option, just because it's part of the policy, and it's not used, and when it is used, it's usually after that. We're also doing away with, in the policy, the language of stating that if your payment or if you're disconnected for non-payment, it's six months average, I mean, you're supposed to average out the six months worth of bills to come up with what that additional deposit is, and so we did away with that and just charged flat $200.
Okay. So that makes it a lot easier and less administrative work. Counsel, I need? At the desk?
Yeah.
Counsel, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Number eight is in the wrong place. We will take no action on that at this time. Number nine, public hearing and consider approval of resolution number 2014-16, adopting the fiscal year 2015 budget for the Guthrie Public Works Authority Fund and miscellaneous funds. Carol, you wanna talk now, or at city council, when the city council budget's approved?
Carol Horsell, 3119 Cedar Ridge Court. I'll try not to cough. Sorry. Okay, four of us last Wednesday, after chamber coffee, were on the street, and we ran into Serena Breland, and she, we kinda got contentious, some of our group did, with her, and she said, "Well, you can get me fired, but the City of Guthrie still is not able to make our water treatment plant payment the next, for the next installment." Is the counsel aware of that?
Is there a question here, other than?
Yeah, about the budget. About if we know we can't make our payment, are you gonna still borrow more money, like tonight, you wanna borrow more money? And I understood that the debt forgiveness was 400,000, but the loan is 610,000.
We're not understand?
She says she's correct. We're talking about money. The loan, the loan?
Carol.
Don't interrupt me, I've got five minutes, and when I get through, why don't you answer? Because Kim just said, "That's correct. You're borrowing 610,000, and you're only getting debt forgiveness of 400,000." Oh, what did you say then?
Kim, we'll wait till she finishes. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay. And then, I've also asked, I guess, what our economic development's been in the last 10 years is making a big airport and selling water, wholesale water. So I've asked two weeks ago, what is our cost of selling water? And I was told that that means, what's the price of the chemicals, electricity, manpower, debt service, all of those together, and then you determine what your cost of selling water is. If you don't know what your cost of selling water is, how do you come up with what you charge the other towns?
Go ahead.
Well, I get that also. If you don't, if you don't know what your cost of providing water is, how do you know what you need to charge to make a profit? Okay? And then, also, I guess, the, we've got Kim as our finance director, I believe, and then Maxine is also full-time finance director, and yet, we pay $635,000 in finance and lawyer fees to borrow money?
Maxine's not a finance?
She Guthrie Public Works. Do you, are you aware, when we borrow money, what it goes for?
It's a public record.
So it's only, it's only Kim is only, is our finance person?
Those documents are all public records?
Okay, so, is that right? Is that right? I tallied for Randall shaded, let's see. $25,000 for the water treatment plant, $25,000 for Cmon, 10,000 for satellite, and 25,000 for Coyle?
No.
Does that sound right?
No, that's not right.
Okay, so I'd like to know what it is. And then, for the financial services person, it's 35,000 for Langston, 135,000 for the water treatment plant, 35,000 Cmon, 35,000 satellite, 35,000 Coyle, for 275,000. Is that really a good use of our money? And then, the bond attorney gets the same thing as the finance person. So I tallied at 635,000 we're spending to borrow money, when we've got people and staff that should be advising us, without these additional people that come from another town and have, make all this money. And then, I also have a question, if, is it a requirement, when you borrow money from Water Resources Board, to get, pay a financial advisor? And I'd like to know where that's written. You just pay a financial advisor because you want to, or do they make a requirement? And I'd like to see that in writing. And then, when you borrowed money from a bank, I believe you paid a city attorney for a bank loan, again, the financial advisor, and I think the bond attorney, and you paid the loan officer $5,000? And I'd like to have a report on, if we make a profit to Langston Water Sales, what is the profit? Maybe for the last two years? If that's what we call the way we make money in Guthrie? I'd like to know that. I think that's all. And this, you know, that's, I'm just asking, 'cause this is the figures I have, it may not be correct, but I'd like to have the correct figures.
Can I have that? Or do you have a copy you can give to me?
I can make a copy and give you tomorrow.
You will make a copy tomorrow, and get it to me. I will get it to Jim, who will get it handled by staff appropriately, accordingly, and we'll take care of it.
Right, and I also talked to Jim today about liability insurance was part of it, so, I mean, he's gonna get that for me, too, I think.
We just don't have that information available right here with us right now, so yeah, give me a copy of that, or get it up to Jim tomorrow morning, okay? Third floor. Alright, thank you, Carol. Okay, counsel, number nine, any discussion on the budget for GPWA? I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. GPWA budget is approved for 2015. Item 10, we are adjourned on GPWA. City council meeting is called to order. On the consent agenda items A through Q, counsel, I need a motion and a second for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you, counsel. Public hearing and possible action on a request by Charlene Higgins for a special permit to allow manufactured home in an area zoned R1, a single-family residential located at 402 South Drexel. This went before the planning commission, is that, okay, went before the planning commission, and they recommended disapproval. That puts a manufactured home in the middle of a residential area, and Sue DeCharme was going to try and help with some possible alternatives. Did y'all get it, do y'all wanna say anything on this, or you just wanna?
Well, I'm hoping, though, it's a residential area, the manufacturing office is gonna be a residential.
Alright, you need to go up to the microphone, please. Now, are you Charlene?
Yes, I am.
Alright, thank you. And with zoning and the planning commission, and, you know, they went through all this, Renee was there with that one, and they recommended disapproval, because again, a residential says that it's a foundation stick, you know, brick and whatever, it's not a mobile home to move in, a manufactured home to move in on wheels.
It's not gonna be on wheels.
Alright.
It's gonna have a foundation on it.
Okay.
And it's gonna be, I'm gonna brick it, just like a home.
Alright.
It's not gonna be on wheels.
Alright.
There's no wheels, it's gonna have a foundation, it's gonna be tied down six ways, so, I didn't understand, if it's tied down to a foundation, why couldn't it be considered my home?
Okay.
As long as it's not on wheels, right?
Well, how does it get there? Do they build it there, or do they?
They bring it in, and they build it on the site.
Build it on site. Counsel, the planning commission went through this and looked at everything, and they recommended that we not approve that. Any questions from counsel?
I'd like to get Renee to explain what the planning commission heard, and...
I agree. If you don't mind, I'll speed from here. Through the planning commission, we do have a state, well, I'm sorry, a citywide ordinance that does not allow manufactured homes within a standard R1 zone, and some of the discussion carried on to the fact that, within an R1, council has requested that we do the traditional style of home, the stick-built home, and I know that Sue had a discussion with you as well, and one of the items, counsel, that is on your request is also to have the application fee that you submitted also be applied to a building committee. I believe that Neighborhood Solutions most likely would be able to, they'll be fine financing for that. One of the issues that we've been concerned with, and traditionally, any kind of resale value of mobile homes in a neighborhood that is already traditional stick-built, does not retain that value over time.
Oh, so it's the value?
That is, that is correct. And what we have found in the past is, when people do want to put in a manufactured home-type structure, again, that value is not retained, it does have an effect on other homes within the area. The response that we get from the citizens in the surrounding area, not just on Drexel, but throughout the community, has been in the recent past, that they prefer stick-built homes within residential areas. And we find that, in talking to some of the developers of mobile home-type properties, that the costs tend to be equal, or in some cases even higher, than what Neighborhood Solutions has been able to find with local contractors going in, and it maintains a similar look in the neighborhood.
Okay. So the letters that we had to send out, and stuff, those really didn't matter, that we did that, it's gonna go, because it's just not gonna fit in the neighborhood? Right?
Well, it did. They have ordinance requirements. They have other rules and regulations, and the planning commission followed those. At this point, we've gotta move on what they have recommended and what Renee's told us. And again, Sue DeCharme is gonna try and give you all the help she can to get you whatever you can.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
Alright, we wanna make sure that you can get something that matches in there, okay?
So, okay.
Alright.
But my other question is, can I transfer the money that I spent for the, I had to pay for the special permits, is, are we gonna transfer it to a building?
Yes, yes, I think Renee?
That's indicated on your cover letter in your packet.
Right, I thought it was.
Asking for permission from counsel to be able to transfer that.
So that money, we will agree to do that. That money will transfer over, so you won't lose anything on that aspect of it, okay?
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Charlene.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Right. Sorry, yeah, you're right. It was on the letter, yeah, alright. Alright, on that, on that thing, it's to move those funds that she's already spent on that, to move it over to the other part, so it doesn't cost her twice as much. My apologies on that one.
But we haven't even voted on whether to allow or disallow.
Right.
And it's written to say that we would allow it, so we, I guess we need a motion to allow it, and then we would vote on whether to allow it or not, but the motion would be worded to allow it, the way the agenda is written. Is that correct, Randall?
Yeah, you make the motion in the affirmative, and then if you want to approve the special use, you vote yes. If you want not to approve the special use, you vote no.
So we get a vote on it, I will, I will make the motion that we allow it, and to allow the, that if we don't, that we allow the funds to be transferred to the other.
If it goes the other way, alright. I need a second?
Second.
Or should those be separate? No, that would be, that would cover.
That'll cover. Alright, counsel, I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes. And it is unanimous, and the funds will move over to your other housing. Okay? Thank you. Number four, public hearing and possible action on final plat for Silent Harvest Phase II subdivision, that you, if you'll get up there, just in case we got some questions. This is a housing area out there off of Oklahoma, on the west side of town, they're finishing up the second half, they've already had this other part out there for several years, and they've broken ground, they're building it all, and in the planning commission, they had some questions about sewer lines, whatever, have those been taken care of, or are we assured they're gonna be taken care of?
Done. They're done.
They're done?
Not only, and we're actually doing a little bit extra, too, for some city stuff, too, so, it's all done.
And does that have a recommendation on it?
Yeah, to approve the final plat.
Well, right here.
Yes, it does have a recommendation on it, to approve the final plat of Silent Harvest Phase II, as recommended by staff.
To approve the final plat?
Yes. Alright. Counsel, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes. And it's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number five. Discussion and possible action on agreement between the City of Guthrie and the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce for the purpose of encouraging, promoting, and fostering tourism, and the City of Guthrie to be funded by the hotel motel tax receipts. I have two people that wanna speak, Glenda Radagonda and Evelyn Nephew. Who wants to go first? Glenda does, thank you very much.
My name is Glenda Radagonda, I am a property owner at 110 East Oklahoma Avenue, also a business owner and an artist at G Gallery and Glass Studio. I've been asked to speak today on behalf of a large group of citizens, community leaders, business and property owners, and festival and event coordinators. The issue we wish to address is the Guthrie Convention and Business Bureau, which is managed by the Chamber of Commerce, in particular, to the new proposed CVB contract, and to references that have been made, that there is the possibility of moving the funds and responsibilities of the CVB to the city. We're concerned that these changes that are being proposed can have a grave effect on us. As your constituents, it's our responsibility to let you know what the majority of us want. We have seen great strides in tourist and visitor development, and the progress is due to the efforts of our current CVB, including but not limited to, they form strong alliances with other city and state CVB organizations, this is their third year as active American Bus Association members, they attend tourism roadshows and visit other state tourist locations to provide brochures and Guthrie information. They're involved and active in cross-promotions with organizations such as the Oklahoma City CVB Day Trip Program, the Western Heritage Museum, Frontier Country, military programs, the Lazy E Arena, and many more. They implement a strong annual marketing and advertising program, including traditional advertising and public relations, and advertising as well as website and digital marketing. They provide major marketing support for all festivals and events. They run the tourism office Monday through Friday, and are open during weekend festivals and events. They answer questions and give directions to tens of thousands of visitors every year. Just recently, they won the Oklahoma Arts Council Tag Grant to develop Guthrie as an arts district. Becoming a bona fide arts district has proven to be one of the most successful programs for bringing people to a city. As an arts district, there's more to see, more to do, and more to buy. It benefits everyone, from the B&amp;Bs to the restaurants and retail merchants, more sales translates to more sales tax revenue. Our CVB is doing their job, and they're doing it well. We are of the opinion that what really at the heart of this matter is miscommunication and misunderstanding. Therefore, we would like to ask the city council to table the proposed new contract and extend the existing CVB contract for three months. The three-month extension would bring the CVB to the end of their fiscal year, allowing them to fulfill all contracts already in place. The CVB is also proposing a dedicated workshop for the whole city council to ask questions and address any issues in detail. Not everyone could be here today, but we have over 100 signatures on a petition supporting our position. We also have representatives here to answer any questions you might have, I'll read off a little list. From the B&amp;Bs, H.C. Patel, and would you please stand and stay standing for questions? From the Pollard, Van French, and Liz Sturkle. The Eighty-Niner Festival, Albert Hocking, already standing. From the museums, Richard Hendricks. From entertainment, Von Kobern and Faisal Khan. Territorial Christmas, Sheree Gordon. Chamber Board, Don Harden. Price Purvis, Evelyn Nephew, and Terry Kennedy. Guthrie Escape, yours truly. State Senator A.J. Griffin. And the Bluegrass Festival, Tom Webb. Counsel members, do you have any questions for our representatives?
What's in the contract that you can't live with, that we're proposing? Because we are asking for accountability, and that's really all we're asking for, this business that we're trying to pull the CVB from the chamber is not in that contract anywhere. We're asking for some accountability of tax dollars, that's really all there is to it, and if you can't stomach that, then that's the problem. If you can't stomach accountability, then we've got a problem, because this people up here are responsible for those tax dollars, and we have to be able to account for them, and we're not able to do that right now. We need that accountability.
Well, the way I would answer that question is exactly what I said, the reason that we're asking you to table this discussion of the new contract and give a three-month extension is, those questions can be answered, but to do something immediately while there are still other contracts to fulfill and honor, to me, is not real good business. You have lots of time with a three-month extension to have those questions answered and have accountability. I don't think there's anyone here in this room that doesn't want accountability. We've seen, personally, accountability on a lot of levels. Over the past five years alone, I can tell you, as a business owner, I know that those efforts have made a difference to my business. So that's my accountability. You have to have accountability at your right, but we're not asking you to not do a contract, we're asking you to table it and give three months' extension to work those things out.
We're asking you to accept our contract, and then if there's some problems in it, we can work it out.
It's not acceptable as is. I don't think there's anyone else. Be respectful. Any other questions? If no other questions, then what we would like to say is that we recognize, as our elected officials, that what you do is very important, and we believe you will see the wisdom of tabling this decision of the proposed new CVB contract, extend the existing contract through the end year. That's okay. So am I. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenda. The last person we have is Evelyn Nephew.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, thank you. I would just, I am Evelyn Nephew, and I'm the chamber chair. I would like to go on record as support of the statement that has just been made, and I know, counsel, that you all received an email from us to ask for that same request to be extended. The email should have read to you, like, on September 11th, at 2014, at 9:30, the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors met to review the proposed changes to the 2015 CVB contract with the City of Guthrie. We unanimously agreed with the current, we unanimously disagreed with the current proposal. We respectfully request a quarterly extension for the agreement to be discussed in detail by having an independent workshop with the city council that more... workshop with the city council that more discussion may occur, and that's what we would like to do. We ask you that you honor that request.
Thank you, Mary.
Can I ask a question?
Evelyn.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
I just, do you have any specifics that are problematic in the current agreement?
Yes, there has been some additions in there that we need to discuss, and I think it'd be for the best interest of all of us, so that we can get a good understanding that what we want to do and what we're trying to do. Yes.
What are those specifics? You didn't say what they are. That's what he asked you.
Yes, the specifics are in your contract that you all proposed. It's the proposal that you all have proposed.
What is wrong with what we've proposed?
We see some areas in there that we think are redundant. We see some areas also where we see it's like macro-managing. We see a lot of things in there that we need to discuss with you all as a board, as a business, business to business. We need to have this workshop with you all to discuss these entities.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think anybody's trying to discredit the chamber or the C V B or deposit to stop, at least not that I've heard. And I guess I don't understand, accountability should be given in any, any business, period, especially if a little bit of the funds or some of the funds are coming from a municipality. And I think that's what started this about a month and a half ago, if I'm not mistaken, is that we weren't getting the accountability that we had asked for, and that's all that I'm aware of that we want.
Okay. And this is where I think when we have this sit-down discussion across the table to discuss things individually, that we can find out what these things are, so that everybody can know, so that when you come back together, you can make a decision. That's all we ask.
Can I know something? You know, I would like to second what Cheryl is saying, is because we want accountability. At the same time, you know, I understand, it seems like there's some misunderstanding about some of the points, but my worry, too, this thing is, of course, it was leaked in the news leader, but this has been out several weeks, and I still have not heard specifics. That's my concern here. You know, we need specifics, because I looked through this, and I'm struggling to find anything that's necessarily bad. We just want accountability. I'm going to tell you, there's nothing in this contract that says we want to just go take away your money, or take away money from the C V B and have them, the chamber, manage it. We're not saying that in this contract. There's nothing in there. If you've heard this, it's a rumor specifically, right? So we want accountability, and we kind of felt like in the last year, we've lacked some accountability, and we want to make sure, as any contract, any legal contract, that we have that accountability, because it's $133,000. I've actually heard people worry about accountability. So, you know, I hear all sides.
And since you've heard this, council, and we're here, another thing, this is an opportunity for us to sit down and to dispel some of these rumors and some of the myths. The only way that we can do it, the way that I see it, is that to get an understanding. That's one of the key things in trying to get anything done and to lead toward a decent resolution. And so we see some things, you all see some things. The best way that we see to rectify it is to sit before the table, sit down, break bread together, and let's talk about it.
Why did we wait till this day to do it? Why didn't we do this in the last six weeks when this came up, when we identified that money was being put into a 501(c)(3) that didn't belong going there, and things like that? That we identified that there's some problems with the appropriation of that money, where it's going, it's being misappropriated. Why did we wait till now to bring this up and extend this?
We didn't receive the contract until the 9th of September. Okay.
Exactly.
So we didn't get a contract until then. Our board met that next Thursday, which is a week after, which was, what, the 11th?
The 11th.
Our board met on the 11th. We didn't, we didn't see the contract.
Well, what's wrong with it, Mary? What's the specifics?
I got a huge list. You want to go over it right now? We can do it right now.
We were waiting. We've been asking.
We're going to ask about it.
Okay. Let's go over it item by item. Number five, you added that the chamber will submit to the city and the C V B an annual budget prior to approval for the board?
What's wrong with that?
Nothing. We do it. What's wrong? We do it.
So we just added that we want it in there because it wasn't in there. You weren't required. We're asking you to do it. Why are you rejecting that?
A form of micromanagement?
No, it's not.
Why are you rejecting that?
It is.
No, it's not. I don't know where it is.
You're correct. You're asking for approval before our board even looks at it. That's what this says. The chamber will submit to the city.
You already do it.
The C V B annual budget prior to approval for chamber board. You've got the chamber board.
You just said you already do it, so what is your problem with it?
Wait a minute, okay.
I've asked the question. She hasn't answered.
Okay. We submit to the council every third, every three, every quarter, exactly what we spend and exactly what we receive. You guys have those in detail. We break everything out. You see everything that we get, and you see everything that we spend. If you guys have questions, I've never heard of any question that you had on what we spent our money on.
Did you not sit through the same workshop we did? We had questions.
You asked me, you, in the workshop, okay, we'll address that here in a second. Let's continue on with the, with what we've got in this.
They don't care what I ask. That's why.
Yeah, well, I'll answer that. The, the chamber is responsible for the following. The chamber will provide the city with marketing literature for distribution. That's one question. Or that's one item on here.
On four, E4?
On E1.
Marketing, oh, E1.
On E1.
E1.
Okay.
Chamber provides.
This is very vague, and it's open for translation. For example, if the city were to want to court a new business to come into Guthrie, does this mean that they could call us and tell us to create a marketing package targeting that business and have it printed and sent over to the city at the C V B expense? Marketing is not tourism. They have completely different purposes, and the target audience is not the same. Okay? On the chamber office will open for at least four hours on the Saturdays of Eighty-Niner Event and the Victorian Christmas Walks.
Is that a problem?
We normally do this.
Yes.
So then what's the problem? That's what I'm getting at. Everything we've said, what's the problem? We're just putting it in writing, that we're asking you to do these things, and you've got a problem with it. What is the problem?
The gazebo is open 24/7 right now with all of our literature, and what if, say, what if we had, according to this contract, what if we had a volunteer in our office that's scheduled for a festival? They get an emergency call from a friend or a family person, and they have to close the office. So is our contract in danger when something like this happens?
No.
It's, this is irrelevant, irrelevant. This is a chamber function and not a C V B function. When people call the chamber for information, I'm actually off on the next one. Sorry. The chamber will notify the city of an event looking to be established inside the city within 72 hours of initial contract. Okay, this is irrelevant. This is a chamber function and not a C V B function. When people call the chamber for information about events or ideas they might have for an event, we give direction to them to contact the entities that are required for their event. The next one, number four, the chamber will submit marketing materials to the city for review before they are published. Once again, I refer to this contract, which gives the Chamber of Commerce authority, and the current contract that we have, it states in the very first page that the chamber has agreed to assume the function and responsibility for the administration of such revenues to be devoted to tourism, development in the City of Guthrie, held by the Bureau, which is the C V B, whereas the governing body of the City of Guthrie has determined it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to transfer to the chamber pursuant to the terms of a written agreement. Our tourism materials are often time-sensitive. If this information has to go in front of the city council for approval, it'll take months, which will affect our productivity, our dissemination of information to our targeted audiences. Okay, number, let's see. The chamber will represent the city in a professional manner, in person and in social media, number five. The only social media entity that is connected to the C V B is the website, guthriok.com. The Facebook and Twitter accounts are all under the auspices of the Chamber of Commerce. And then at the, on G, on the very bottom, it says the city council reserves the right to discuss and consider a decrease in the allowable overhead expenditures in the event that there is a violation of D4 or DE. Once again, I'm going to reread what I said, but once again, on talking about the contract reverting to the very first page of how the, the chamber and the city agree on how to handle the tourism.
But, Mary.
The city doesn't have authority to manage the Chamber of Commerce.
Why shouldn't we have the, reserve the right to do those things if something's going south, and we don't want it there?
We have always given the city the facts and figures on every expenditure. You guys have it in front of you every quarter. You know everything that comes in and everything that's spent. And if you guys have a question, you've never said you've got a question. In fact, whenever we came up here to, you know, let the public know how we spend our funds, the council didn't even want to hear it. You know, it's not an insult to you guys.
You mean, the last, last time?
Yes.
No, we want to hear, we didn't want to have somebody read every line item of three pages. I even said, I don't want to hear, I want to hear a summary, and then Lucy just stormed off. That was my problem with that report.
The thing is, is that you have people watching this council all the time that want to know where the tourism dollars are spent. We had phone calls after that from people going, you know, we really like to hear what you guys are doing, but...
You have to read every line of three pages, do you?
Why not? Why can't we?
Okay.
Then you understand.
Why can't they go to your website and get it?
Number, number one, number one, if you guys aren't reading it, and you say you are, we read it in front of it to make sure you hear it.
Okay. Well, that's an assumption, too.
Because I don't think you're reading it.
I have a question. Why is there not a C V B board? Why, you know, one of the problems I'm having a problem with, it seems like there's a lot of overlap between the chamber and the C V B. Well, that's our function. Well, that's our function. It's, to me, it's not clear what exactly the C V B is going to versus the chamber. It seems like there's so much overlap. So there's a separate board for C V B?
There, the C V B is managered, is managed by the chamber, which is in the bylaws of the Chamber of Commerce.
What if you had a separate board? It just seems like the policies are overlapping here.
What policies are overlapping?
You're constantly saying, well, this is chamber, and this is not C V B. It's my problem. There's a lot of bleed over as to what's what and who's responsible for what.
And this is why you need the workshop. Yeah, perfect reason why we...
I mean, I don't have a problem with the workshop on, especially on, because of this problem. I mean, we still want accountability, and I understand that there's a lot of misconceptions, but I would like us to look at how close those are. It just seems like it's hard to have it accountable if they're so melded together that it's like hard to...
Let's have a workshop.
You have proven the point that you need to have the workshop.
But do we need 90 days for a workshop? Could we do, extend it for 30?
I would actually say that we've just proven the point that what we're asking for, you're already doing, and therefore, this contract isn't that big of a deal. You should be able to accept it.
Our, here's the deal. Here's why we need the 90 days, because we're on the fiscal year, okay? So when we contracted everything out, we contradacted everything out for a year from January to December, okay? This contract is in September. I've got three months of contracts that I have to fulfill from now until the end of the year, and if I have to cancel those contracts, it's going to cost, who's going to pay for that? Who's going to pay for what I've already obligated us for, for that year? This is the first time we've ever had this problem, and this need, and we need to have that contract either, we need to switch the contract where it jives with our quarter, our fiscal year, so that if you're not going to renew the contract, then I can walk away and don't have to worry about paying somebody.
Who, who put the contract together in the first place like that?
This contract's been in place since 1998.
Right here, submitted.
So what I'm saying is, if we did, what you're all wanting to do is go from January to December. Is that right? Is that what you're wanting to do?
We're doing that right now. This is up in September.
Okay, so I ask the idiot question. Why was the contract set up from, you know, October?
I don't know. It's always been like that. I don't, I don't know.
We, the answer to that is, we have a fiscal year that begins October 1, and we can't...
That's why we have the budget.
Because our fiscal years end on different dates, and so when you've got an issue like this, we have a problem.
Could we not change that?
That'd be great. That'd be fantastic.
No, my, my point is, it sounds like, you know, I'm, I'm moving more and more toward a workshop, but I'm just not clear about 90 days and why we have to do that. There's a whole lot, and I'm not for a workshop if we're just going to make the contract less accountable. I'm for, I think you need to relook at the whole contract, fiscal year, what's C V B versus chamber. I mean, there's a whole lot to disangle.
You guys can do that. You guys can do that in those 90 days if you want to relook at it.
But I'm asking, if you do that, I want to see that.
I'm not against a workshop either, but I think there's nothing wrong with this contract, and I'm trying to understand why you're so violent against it. I've heard people that are not in this room have called me and told me their horror stories and asked not to be told who they are because of the things that go on, and I'm not going to go into them, but I've heard a lot of things that are not, that are not good, and they're very proud that this council is standing up and asking for these accountability measures to be put in, and they are supporting us. I've gotten tons of emails on both sides of this. Most of the ones I got on your side were orchestrated, saying we're trying to remove the C V B from the chamber, and that is not at all what this contract says.
Well, I've asked you guys three times, what, what is it from our, from our budget that we've given you? What is it that's wrong with that budget? What is it that we're not accountable for?
Well, I'm trying to understand how we've, how we've given you almost twice as much money in the recent years, and all of a sudden, at that workshop, you were yelling at us that you weren't able to pay your bills. How can that be? We're giving you twice as much money, and you're not able to pay your bills.
You're not giving us twice as much. We're right on, we're right on target.
I guess we weren't in the same workshop.
You know, I, I think my concern is the, what I've heard the most that's critical is some of the social media stuff on there. I mean, you got Twitter with poop and a, and a flower. I've heard a lot of negativity on that. I've heard people disparaging the city on the Facebook. I understand you don't control it, but maybe there should be more control over the social media in this contract, or just somehow you guys do this, but I think that's a problem. When you have independent Twitter and Facebook that you're like, oh, we don't, we're not accountable to that. I mean, to me, that's the face of Guthrie, and that has created some doubt in several people's minds, and I think that we need to re-envision the role of the chamber, how does it relate to the C V B, fiscal year? A little bit. I mean, seriously, and I am for a workshop, guys. I am talking, I'm saying, let's talk about this, but you've got to understand where we're coming from, too. It is our responsibility to deal with this $133,000 in a responsible way, and we feel like we're trying to do that, and I would like to meet you halfway, but we have to meet halfway, if that makes sense.
Okay, let's, let me address the twice as much money, okay? Because for 2014, year to date, we've received $100,068.29, okay, from January until September. That's what we've received. Last year, we received $131,107.83. So right now, we are trending, we, there's a difference of $31,000 that we have not met and have not exceeded.
How about the year before?
I only compared last year.
I noticed.
And what I'm saying is, for this year, you, you're telling me we've got twice as much money to spend?
Over, over time, you have grown to a lot more money.
We don't have. We haven't even met our goal yet.
So how can you not pay your bills? Is that our problem? The fact that you tell us that you can't pay your bills means we got to look at, at the accountability issue?
Actually, it is your problem. Actually, it is your fault. Yes.
It's our fault?
Yes, it is.
That you can't pay your bills?
Yes.
You're entitled to this tax dollars. Tell people that.
It, I'll tell, let me tell you why that we didn't have, that we, that we've struggled to pay our bills was because...
This is good.
Because in December, the city has always provided a lift for us to change lights.
You're entitled to that. Is that in the contract somewhere?
And that, and in that, in doing that, this year, we've had, hey, wait a minute, let me talk, okay? This year, or last year, the lift went back, city, the chamber didn't touch it. None of the lights got changed in downtown. It stayed just the way it was, okay? This year, we, we got the lift, and we were billed for the entire lift.
And you got donations to pay for it.
The bill was over, do you have my figures? The, the bill was over $8,000, and we received three. So we were in a deficit of $5,000 basically right off the bat.
You had more than donations.
We did not have that in the budget. We spend our money from January to December. We don't carry, we don't hold anything over. We know what our budget is. We know how much we need, and we spend it. We don't put it in a savings account and wait till a rainy day. We spend the money like we're supposed to and are accountable for it. Now, that's one thing that happened.
If you're not paying your bills, you're not spending the money the way you're supposed to. And that is not this chamber, that's not the city council's fault. If the chamber can't pay its bills, then this city will not pay the chamber's bills.
Oh, yeah. The, the second one was the 5% that the city started taking out. First, it was...
Per contract.
Twenty-seven, what, that's, fine, per contract, but we didn't know it was going to get taken out, okay?
You can't read the contract? Do we need to read it to you?
Well, let me tell you, you know, if you read the contract, you would know that there's supposed to be two council members sitting on our board, too. Well, how come you didn't do that, Zee? Did you read the contract?
We didn't have anybody. We didn't have anybody appointed.
You're not reading the contract either.
Either?
You're not reading the contract. You were supposed to have two people sit on our chamber board. You guys don't have them sitting there?
Counsel, I can, what I can see is that...
I think we had two members on the, on there. We had you and we had Serena, then we had the mayor.
I think we have a lot to talk about. So I'm for an extension, but I want to seriously relook what we're doing, a little bit, you know? Seriously.
No problem. This is what we want. I want you to know that you're, you're not only talking to us here, you have a viewing audience.
Yes, I do.
And you also...
And I've had a lot of people call me.
We are also your constituents. So what we're asking is not too much to ask, and we would like for you all to honor that request.
And I'm asking that you not, that, we're not asking too much to put some accountability in, and that's, that's all we're asking for.
We think it can work, we think it can work both ways. We really do.
Okay. We've heard from the council or from the chamber. Any specific, anything else? Anybody on the council, any other?
I would, I would make the motion that we do look at doing a workshop, because there's a lot of things that are probably wrong here. But I think we need to make the motion to accept the contract as it is, because they are doing the things that are in the contract, and I move then that we approve the contract that we proposed.
If we do that.
We have a motion to approve the contract as proposed. Do I have a second?
Before you have a second, I'd like to hear one more person stand up and say something, James.
Well, she'd be over there.
Yeah, come over here.
James Long, 512 East Washington.
Thank you.
I'm obviously not in the majority in this room, because I actually stand on the other side of the fence. I'm actually a little embarrassed by what's going on here this evening, because I think that I've stand with the council and that there has to be some accountability, especially within the, I mean, you're talking about micromanaging, but at the same time, you're talking about the image of our community. And to see some of the types of advertising that's been placed out there, I'm embarrassed. If we, if we have to, if we have to drag our asses to Guthrie, then why are we coming? So, I, I mean, we can't bring, we can't, there's, there's other things we can't say other than that, and I think that that's, I mean, me as a business owner in town, to know, I mean, I don't know if that was chamber money or C V money, I'd like to find out, because I, to know that that's taxpayers' dollars paying for that, and then for, for the chamber as well to take credit for all the heads and beds, I think that they failed to recognize what the oil and gas industry has done for this community and how much money that's actually brought into this community, not the advertising that they've done, so...
Let him talk.
I appreciate the same respect that you guys asked for. So I think that we, those are things that we need to take a look at. I don't think that just, just the being, bringing the majority tonight really is what the majority of the community may really represent. It's just they, they rallied and, and the naysayers didn't.
Thank you, James.
The naysayers did rally. They called and they emailed me and they talked in private, and I've heard a lot, and I, I'm sure you all have too, and my motion is still on the floor.
Motion's on the floor to approve the contract as it is.
I was, I was just going to say something.
Go ahead.
I personally don't want anything to happen to the chamber or the C V B. I think it's a vital part of what we do for Guthrie.
It is.
It is.
I would agree, yes.
And I don't want anything to happen. I, I guess I'm sitting here wondering how in the world this fistfight got started, because that, I don't think that's been anybody's desire. I'm really, I'm really confused about what needs to be done. I think that I support the fact of accountability. I think any of you would as business people, and I would be disappointed if you did not. I think that we want to promote the C V B and the chamber. We want them to do their business. I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned that some of this was brought up, well, I guess what was the workshop three months ago? I mean, it was, it was put out there. This is all stuff that I'm sure that not everybody has been privileged to hear both sides of the story. And, and I think that because you don't know some of the things that transpired earlier, I'm wondering why we didn't do something about it before it came to this horrible situation.
We had three months to work on this.
I just, I guess I'm just really, I'm really frustrated.
And pointing, pointing fingers at all of us and blaming us for this is not the way it should have been going. And now, I don't have a business in town, we used to have one years ago, but, you know, basically, they came around and asked for our dues that way, and it was used. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to second the motion, because I'm sorry, folks, I don't want to sit here and whine about something. I understand what you're all's problems is, and I know I see some of you out there shaking your heads, but the problem is, we've let this slide along for three months. I mean, if this was going to have been done, they knew about it. Mary had the, she had what we'd been told to do, and all we had to do was sit down in that last three months and worked it out. We're talking 90 days? Well, there's your 90 days right there. I'm second in the motion, because I think it needs to move on down the road. And we can still come back and discuss this later on, but that's, I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it.
We didn't have a contract three months ago yet. We just got the contract.
I know, but some of the things that we discussed out there could have been hammered out.
We didn't know what to address, because we didn't have a contract.
Can I say something? Molly, if you're approving this the way it is, is I, I would like to see us talk about this, and if we approve it, I'm worried we're not going to talk about it.
Listen to the motion.
I, one way or another, I would like for us to talk about this issue, because I think there's a lot of problems with this, and, and fiscal year problems. I think there's problems with the C V B, chamber overlapping so much. I think this has to be...
The first thing I said in the motion, John, is that we need a workshop to talk about it, but we still need to approve what we're proposing, because this is what we want as for...
All right.
It can be changed.
Here, here's the motion on the floor, that the new contract be approved and that we do a workshop, correct? And that mo, and that motion has been seconded.
Correct.
So I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. And it's four to one. It passes, the new contract passes, along with a workshop to be planned, eventually...
Within, I mean, immediately.
Immediately. They'll work on it and get it done. All right. Number six, discussion and possible action to appoint two representatives to the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce Board.
I would say that's a moot point until we...
Until we talk about the rest of the...
Till the, till the, the chamber has accepted the contract.
We'll table number six.
Do we need to have a motion or anything for that?
Probably shouldn't move the table.
Move to table?
Second.
Uh, motion, second. Counsel, cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Show us the votes. And it's tabled, and we will go after that later, after we do the, the board, the other deal. All right. Okay, if we're through, y'all can carry your conversations outside. All right, number seven, discussion and possible action on resolution number 2014-18 of the City of Guthrie, Oklahoma, the city approving action taken by the Guthrie Public Works Authority, the authority authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of a promissory note of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. If you want to talk, go outside.
We still got business.
Same move.
Number seven, have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote, and it's unanimous for the Water, Oklahoma Water Resource Board. Number eight, discussion and possible action resolution 2014-19, establishing an annual fee for mobile food vendors as recommended by the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. I think this was a $75 a year thing. The first one's a little cheaper or something, if they just want to see if they want to do it. I'm not sure, but anyway, it's $75 a year.
Same move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
Counsel, cast your vote.
Yes. Sorry.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote, and it's unanimous for the food truck. Number nine, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 3262, amending court costs and fines as recommended by the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee.
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote, and it's unanimous. Thank you. Number 10, discussion and possible action on a vacancy in the position of Ward Two City Council Member and GPWA Board Trustee for the term ending May 2015. We had six applicants. Counsel, I will take any motion if you want to make one, or if you want me to go through...
I've, I've looked at the names. I would actually, the one just stuck out after me, and I'd recommend Damon Deveraux be appointed to that position.
No, 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 no.
I have a motion for Damon Deveraux.
No, I'd like to have a meeting and sit down with all the applicants, so I'm making a motion that we'd, I'd like to sit...
I got a motion on the floor.
We've got to wait until we see if we get a second.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for Damon to have a second. I have no second. All right, do I have another motion?
I make a motion, we have an opportunity to interview, and the mayor set up where three of us can get on there and interview each of the candidates, so we can have an opportunity to listen to what they have to say, and that's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion to interview and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
All votes are in.
Show us the vote, and four to one. All right. I understand this is not going to be a short, easy thing, and I think Mr. Taylor and, yeah, you're going to be on that committee.
I have no problem.
Mr. Wood is going to be on there also. I think Cheryl Paget needs to be there, too.
I'll have her.
I appreciate y'all volunteering.
Yeah, well, I was going to ask if I could volunteer.
We'll have to get with Jim or with Serena to set that up at a convenient time, because y'all all work, so we've got to work around that, and they work, or most of them do. Right, so we'll, and may not be able to do it all on one night, all right? Okay. Number 11, public hearing and possible action on resolution 2014-15, adopting the fiscal year 2015 budget for the general fund and miscellaneous funds.
Any public comments?
Any comments, public hearing, anything left?
I have a question for Randall. When people make public comments on things like this, are there supposed to be voters in this city?
Well, it would be nice. They don't have to be, obviously. Anyone can come speak, and anyone can make a record request, but...
We, we did to bring that up to, yeah, we talked about that.
I just wondered, because...
You technically don't really work for anyone who's not a resident in the vote room, Guthrie.
Do you have to give him a full five minutes?
No problem.
You get one minute if you're out of, okay.
All right. Number 11, I need a motion and a second.
You've got to have rules, though. All right.
Move approval.
So, or second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, cast your vote.
Same move, second. All votes are in.
Show us the vote, and it's unanimous. Thank you. Request or comments from members of the council. Jeff Taylor, anything going on we didn't know about?
My daughter made this. She's in the sorority house now. Guthrie's got Sand Springs for homecoming tonight, or, I'm sorry, Thursday, or Friday night. Should be a pretty good-sized crowd, and I think that's it.
Cheryl Paget.
They don't like you.
Go Blue Jays.
All right. Mr. Thomas.
You know, I've said more than usual tonight.
Yeah, you'd have.
But I feel strongly about what I, what we just put in place there is accountability, and I will always stand for accountability when we're talking about tax dollars. What we just did, though, is we put, to wrap this up, is there, the emails I got were people saying that we were trying to remove the C V B from the chamber. We just approved a contract that says we want the C V B and the chamber to work together. If they don't approve the contract on their side, they've done what they said they didn't want to do. I don't, and they've said over and over, they're doing everything that's there that, that we've asked for, so I don't understand the consternation, so I feel very good about what we did, and I'm, I'm proud of you guys for voting with us on that.
Mr. Wood.
Wow, I just feel like we need a mediation or something. Maybe counseling, marriage counseling? I don't know, but wow. You know, it, I'm going to tell you, it's stressful being up here, because we, I've heard both sides. I've heard both sides, and they're both incredibly passionate on this issue. And we've got to sit here and make a decision, what's best for the city, and we're accountable for those fiscal funds, and we want to make sure that those are spent as well as we can.
John, you make a good point, if I could just add. You said that we're accountable for those funds.
Yeah.
There's a conflict there. The chamber people are responsible for the chamber, we're responsible for the city, and there's, there's parts that we go down in parallel with, and there's parts that are in conflict, and we, we have to do what we have to do for, for the city.
I agree, and I, and again, I, I think there's so much co-megling in this contract that we just need to make, make it clear. Another one is social media.